Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Deviasio?
Here.
Mr. Beegan?
Here.
Ms. Menard?
See the motion approved the June fifteen, two thousand twenty-three minutes. All in favor?
Hi.
So today we have one point three individual employment agreement dispute.
What you have members of the subcommittee here are two employees, both present here tonight, Sammy Bossi and Mr. Jeff Lozaro, who have a dispute with the agreement that was pending of their termination. I met with each of them. They were not satisfied with the results. And as I informed them, they were able to come before members of committee, subcommittee on policy as it does affect that. That's what they're challenging the policy as opposed to their individual contract in order to state their case secretly. Each of them have a different, a similar, and one shows out has something a little different.
Right, so they're both individual contracts and non-union employees, correct?
Yes.
All right, so I'm, I'm, Mr. Bossi's sick time will be in two days. Want to take one at a time with my leader?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Although both of them have something similar they're going to speak to. So Zaro has something in addition to. Okay, yeah, the best is to give them individual right to come, so that's okay.
I approach? No, I'm gonna start with, I'm gonna start with Mr. Bossi first.
Actually, I prefer a few stats.
All right, well, I'm going over each individual one first, because your one point three, the first one is the second. So just to go over your, the sick leave buyout bank.
And I also had a discrepancy that just came to my attention about the payout as well.
And what would you pay out, Amy? Do you pay out the sixty dollars per day?
That's what I was paid out, was the sixty dollars a day. And the dispute is with the non-union twelve-month policy that states. Just to give that wording what it states, I'm sure you have in front of you.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going over it now. I read it briefly before today. I'm just trying to circle work, but.
Under it, it states about the sick leave and any and all benefits not listed shall be consistent with the terms and conditions of the Diamond Teachers Association collective bargaining agreement. It does state, the other provision was, there's no, that it said it is.
You talking about, you talking about one point two? Sick leave, equally should have sick leave, if I would refer.
It doesn't list that on here.
If I, if I may try to just not, Amy, you can correct me, because I'm not, it's not about any opinion. In Amy's case, the only one I know about, I didn't know you had another one today. But, but.
Yeah, I'll go with this one first.
Okay, the one thing is, okay, in Amy's contract, it says she's to be paid back, sick leave buyout, at a rate of, it actually says forty, again, sixty in parentheses, but the school paid her sixty. Okay, in her contract, it says that. She's basically saying, correct me, at any time.
It just says sixty per day, not exceed fourteen seventy.
Correct.
Or maybe see forty-five dollars.
Says forty, says forty.
Forty-five dollars and then it goes to the parentheses sixty.
Again, superintendent at the time made these contracts up exactly with the help of the then executive secretary. But, okay, that's the end of it. It was paid at sixty. Based on that language, Amy's contention is, again, Amy, please, if I don't get something right, don't be afraid to tell me I'm wrong. She's saying that because the language says jury duty, funeral leave, personal leave, military leave, life insurance, health insurance, dental insurance, sick leave, emergency leave, retirement benefits, and any old benefits not listed herein shall be consistent with the terms and conditions of the Diamond Teachers Association collective bargaining agreement. Just as it relates to sick leave buyback, she's saying that should control and therefore the DTA contract at the time, or at, right now, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, would pay out at eighty dollars and forty-one cents. That's issue one, right?
That's correct.
That school paid her out, paid you out based on your contract, and she's saying that because of that language, she should be given eighty dollars and forty-one cents per day. That's, that's your issue, right?
Right.
Okay, that's the issue.
That's the, that's the issue I have, because that's what it says, black and white in the policy.
Okay, why did we, why, I'm just, that was out of it. When you got your contract, why didn't you stipulate this then, sixty dollars? Why didn't you say something then?
Well, I'll get, if I want to be completely honest, is because I wasn't aware about this policy. But to ask the question, if we want to bring up my contract, why did in twenty twenty-one, did the board afford me the additional twenty-one sick days based off of this policy? And it doesn't state that in my contract, but I was afforded those twenty-one days. And it doesn't say that anywhere in my contract.
Well, I don't know why that would stop.
Because it was in the policy. And maybe you could, you could better maybe explain.
Who approved that? Mr. Boss, I can comment on that.
Okay.
You talking about when you got the extra twenty-one days? That was in the teachers' contract, right? Everybody got those?
Right.
Correct, okay, so.
And that was in twenty twenty-one.
Yes, when, when they did, it wasn't in your contract?
It's in the contract.
That's what I'm saying. It was, was put in your contract. That's what I was just gonna say, was put in. What happened at the time? Yeah, and again, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. I didn't do the contracts. At the time, it was done through central administration. They did the contract. And at the time, they put in a provision, and I'm not gonna tell you, I do know the answer why, but they put in a provision that all employees would get twenty-one additional sick days. And that twenty-one additional sick day language came from the DTA contract. To be very frank, it shouldn't have been put in the contract, okay? Because those were for teachers. They got, they, they got these additional days, and it was a three-year period. They were supposed to get those additional days, that after they worked for three years, they got twenty-one days. The reason being is because they only got seven days to start their contract. It should have never been in any individual contracts. We messed up. We did.
So it's in there, so we gave it to them.
And we, that's why, that's what I'm saying. We messed up, and, and Mr. Lozaro was the one that brought it to everybody's attention, that we messed up. And we gave it to him. They got additional twenty-one days for nothing. Because it was inadvertently put in there, it was signed, we honored it.
Okay. So it's in her current contract?
Yeah.
That she signed, the twenty-one?
Oh, yeah, she, she got it. It was in all of it, not just Miss Bossi. Not gonna do it, I'm not singling her out, it was everybody. And we did mess up, but we honored our mistake.
So I guess the other question I have is, I feel like you're alluding to that contract, a non-union personnel contract, individual contract, supersedes a policy.
It does. It, it does. I mean, if the policy.
Explain to me then why, can I just finish?
If the policy said, if the policy said forty dollars a day, and we gave you sixty, should we go back to forty?
No, but here's the thing, you should go back and look at every single, like I did with Mr. Bentley, when he pulled several contracts, it was clearly a typo. It was clearly an error that nobody picked up on, not the board, not the jury. You're saying about the forty and the sixty.
So there's other individual contracts that have it as the?
I miss, yes.
As the eighty, whatever it is.
No.
Everyone that equalled out.
Every individual contract that was done.
It's a typo from forty to sixty.
It was a typo. They typed from forty to sixty. They typed forty-five, they parentheses sixty.
Right, so it's sixty.
It's sixty.
Everyone shows, everyone shows sixty.
That same thing in yours, that shows sixty.
Right, exactly. But what I'm, what I'm disputing is, so this twelve-month policy that states the language, why would you write a policy for non-union personnel if a contract supersedes it? What would be the purpose?
The, the, the idea of the twelve-month policy, twelve-month contract, we should try to bring everybody in line. And we had contracts all over the place. It's only a template to try to keep people in line. We do, we do have contracts that are not the same as what this all reads for twelve months or ten months. But this is a template to try to bring us all back in line, but we don't follow it a hundred percent, because it's up to the individual contract that the superintendent and the assistant superintendent write off and represent to school board you approve.
So this can be not, this is not equitable that across the board. You want, you're saying that you were trying to make it equitable across the board, but it's not. It's not.
Let me ask you a question.
Go ahead.
Just, I just want to clarify to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, because I understand your concern. I sympathize.
Just to, I'm sorry, stop. So I just apologize for this minute. Mr. Lozaro was always taping this.
Yes.
I'm supposed to ask that at the beginning. I apologize.
I am taping it.
Correct. Sorry, I didn't.
Do we have non-union employees that are not on an individual contract that would fall under this policy outside of their normal contract? I'm just, I'm just questioning, because we have a policy in place, and we have contracts, so they kind of, they kind of contradict each other, if that makes sense. Why have a policy if we, I mean, just.
I, I, this, this is the way it's always been, and this has no bearing, I just wanted, but when we did this, is when we came, we came up, we had a lot of individual contracts that were, had complete disparities in them, mostly on the working conditions regarding the hours of work, okay? There were some people that were not working full years, there were some people that had special hours, there were some people that didn't work summers. They were all individual contracts put in place. So we, so we, at the time, we created a, a, individual contract subcommittee. That was then said, we shouldn't be doing that, not by me, by the superintendent at the time. So we sent this over to the policy committee to try to put something together, okay? That's what it was done for. And the interpretation always was that we were going to try to make it even, okay? But if there was not something addressed in the contract, the non-union individual person, if there's not an issue addressed, then the DTA contract would jump in, okay? However, and I don't, because I'm not saying this to disparage, excuse me, to go against anybody, you gotta read the whole policy, because on the second page of the policy, it says, no, it is anticipated that this policy will apply to paraprofessional and security contracts. Then it goes on to say, due to the particular circumstances of following positions, they will be addressed on a case-by-case basis and recommendations being made by the superintendent and school's committee relative to the compensation and any other compensatory benefits. And then it lists other individual contracts. Granted.
What are they speaking of?
Wait a minute, granted, Amy's is not in there, or Kevin's?
Correct.
I'm not, okay, so, but that's, that's, that's.
And what that language, if, and we can say it's an interpretation, but what it says is it's anticipated, okay, that the policy will apply to a paraprofessional in security. Correct me if my, I'm wrong. We don't have in this building a paraprofessional that's twelve months non-union, nor do we have a security that's twelve month non-union. So that's in.
Yeah, but ten months is part of the policy.
Right, but it's, and that's under the twelve-month policy, it's not under the ten-month. And, oh, that's what I'm looking at right here. And the other thing is, correct me if I'm wrong, so, with all due respect, a paraprofessional salary is less than my salary and a security. So they should be afforded eighty dollars a day if it, if it pained to them, and I should be, I should only receive sixty? How is that equitable?
I'm not.
It's not.
All right.
I'm not.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. All right, we're, we're, we're looking at what you're looking at, Amy.
Right.
The bottom line is this, all right? The contract that you signed and the school committee approved said sixty dollars a day. Now, it probably said at the time forty-five, and somebody went in and put sixty, as you were indicating, but it's sixty dollars a day. This is a template that we use to try to bring everybody in line. We have people with that.
A policy is a template?
We had a pack.
Or is it a policy?
It's just.
Is it a policy or is it a template? That's two different things.
A policy and a contract are two different things.
And a policy and a template is two different things, and you're referring to a template. So you sign, the, the board signs a template, and that's what's considered in place, a template? Or is it a policy? Because the, the, the board is, their job is to write and approve policies, correct? No way does it say that you write and approve templates.
We only approve the non-union employees.
Right.
We approve their contracts. We approve their contracts.
And the board also approves policies?
Correct.
Not templates. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, because you used the word template. This, we don't put templates on the website, right? We put policies.
Policies, correct.
All right.
So, I think we, if we, if we have nothing else with you at this time, I'd like to.
Well, I would like to say one last thing.
As long as it's every fair, right, as long as it, because as long as it is in line with what we're discussing, if nothing else.
Well, to me, it's in line, because it's a little disheartening for me as a twenty-seven year employee, dedicated, loyal employee, to have to sit here before this board and basically dispute maybe twelve hundred dollars we're talking about? That's what we're talking about. And again, it's a pick and choose. That's the diamond way. That's how it's been here lately. And with all due respect, we brought Mr. Bentley back because, right, we wanted to bring morale back in this place, because the place hasn't been the same. Guess what? Under him, we've lost over two hundred years of, of hours in service in the people that have left. And why? Long-term people have left. My plan was to retire from here and not leave this place. But you know what? With all due respect, coming in here and working in, in the hostile environment at times, or, or, or feeling like, because you're on an individual contract, and me, I was given several duties over the years, and I did them because that was the kind of worker I was, and got basically taken advantage of. And you know that. I know you have your own spin on it, and that's fine. Certain people get taken care of around here, and others don't. And that's it in a nutshell.
Well, I mean, if, as a school committee member, we hope that everybody's being treated the same.
Really? Really? Let's be honest, yeah. Let's be honest. Come on. We, we don't need to pretend. We don't need, people know what it is.
I'm not pretending. I, I, I feel the same about everybody should be treated the same. So.
So, okay.
Let's move on to, I'm just gonna move on to Kevin, because we do have a school committee coming up. Kevin, hang on, I'm just gonna find yours, Ken.
Yeah, if you mind, I prefer to talk to there.
Yeah, we're ready, headshot.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'm just gonna ask you to stick with what we're here for, which is about the sick time buyout, please.
Yeah, so.
Yours is more than that.
Mine is more than that. I actually watched three different, okay, three different.
Your, your sick leave more than one, Kevin's the same, right?
Basically. I'll have discussion about that. I mean, obviously, this is boss's discussion, I'm not gonna.
You can discuss on that. Why don't we start with that?
So, yeah.
To go back to the same thing.
Yep, so let's start with, kind of with this boss side here, to be honest. So this policy that was approved by the school committee on May thirteenth of two thousand twenty-one was passed, was to create uniformity according to your words to have equity and balance for the contracts specifically to attend twelve-month contract. In this, in no way shape or form, this policy was to exclude my position as a cooperative education coordinator. I was then provided a one-year contract that was negotiated with civilian and with superintendent there. And at that time, I said, no problem. We sat there, looked at the contract, and then to point to the clause of errors in the contract, the clause was actually written as the DCA clause has should have written, which should mirror according to policy. It was rare. At that time, I asked the, Mr. Brilliant at the time, and I asked Mr. Rebel, who was present in that meeting, I said, the way it reads, is it, is it true to surmise that twenty-one days will be dumped in? And so it was false. Said, let's check, long story short, correct. It was then confirmed by Mr. Kitchen, right, that emailed that the, yes, it will be deposited, so that was already applying this policy in that manner. And I think that's when this boss was a little.
That's that policy, just Kevin, I'm gonna interrupt you, but that wasn't paid pursuant to a policy. That was paid pursuant to the fact it was put in your contract.
It was paid pursuant to the policy, which is mirror, the language.
No, we paid that pursuant to the terms of your contract.
Well, then why would you? Incorrect, because the next year, you change the language in this contract. In this contract, the next year, I get to you, the language is totally changed.
That's what I'm saying, it's not in your contract.
So, if I may.
Yep, I'm, I'm just trying to make it straight here.
I'm, I'm making a statement, like the defendant, I've been done, I appreciate that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm just getting through it. I understand you have some objections, and I appreciate that. Okay, so here we have that was applied in my contract. That policy was applied right then, yeah, that's past practice. At that point, the, the argument was made earlier that there was an error in contract. Policy should number, policy, contractual error should never supersede policy. We have policy here. If there was an error, we are not responsible for those errors. It was only till I looked at this, as I was looking at this, this contract agreement, there's an error in the payment amount. Since they have left on recently, I too will be disputing the difference of pay, which creates a pretty much close to what Mrs. Boss is asking. When I ask the friend anymore from the, from the committee, from, from anybody, from any loss, if the contract says it mirrors all DCA benefits there within, then that means we should have any benefit that's defined in that DCA contract. Conversely, to your point, Mr. Deviasio, you said, well, what if it was a hundred dollars a day on your contract? Would I expect a hundred dollars? No, I would expect the committee and Mr. Bentley to say, this is the policy, is an error. You get eighty versus a hundred.
I, I, I disagree with you, sir.
You disagree with all you want.
The contract, please, if it was my contract, I'd get it. Yeah, but I'm just telling you, don't throw something back at me.
No, I'm just saying that.
I go by contracts, guy, all right? Mr. Lozaro, I go by contracts.
Let me finish my statement respectfully.
Let's continue.
To be quite honest, you, let me finish my statement respectfully.
Fair enough.
So that is the issue of the sick day and pay in terms of discrepancy. Next, I put a, also put in for eight hundred fifty educational reimbursement. The policy once again states that if it is not mentioned within, I do get that benefit. Back in, I want to say, correct me, July of two thousand twenty-two, or is there within, I submit for reimbursement for our MBA course that was pre-approved per the guidelines of the school, that was signed off on, submitted, and cashed out.
Who signed off on that? It was approved by everyone.
It was approved?
Yep, it is a form.
So it's pre-approved.
Pre-approved, signed off, paid out, spoken to Mr. Rebel, tried to even submit that pre-pro rule, no wishes, no concerns, follow what the rules were. As late as the summer, I submitted the same exact form. I did not have that form, it was never returned to me, upon my, it was never returned to me, and stated that it was not part of my contract. Unfortunately, that led to a disagreement between myself and Mr. Kitchen. I brought to the tent in Mr. Bentley, and he stated the same thing, that this clause, that, that the clause or the policy does not apply to my contract as it relates to the eight fifty, which I disagreed. So therefore, that's the other issue I had at hand. That was already issued. And the last piece I'm gonna dispute here is that, in the DCA, I was not offered the same health insurance rate of ninety percent. It was an exclusionary discriminatory clause that states that only four existing family units are to have ninety percent health insurance. Myself and Miss Gagnon, who are obviously married, and should have been afforded that opportunity to take advantage. We were both working here prior to that contract, prior to that clause. She's a DTA member, and I am a twelve-month individual contractor. So those are three main issues I wanted to bring to the board today respectfully. There are other issues that have needed addressing, but this is the main one for these three here, and I want to respect that confines, and those other issues that need to come forth, will come forth in a different manner, different light, because this is not the form.
I just have a question regarding the insurance. I'm trying to, to grasp what you're, what you're looking for with that.
So, right now, I pay, I believe the pay rate, I pay seventy percent health insurance premium. Those, those four selected individual family units, whatever that means, where family units is not defined, were afforded to say, hey, because of cold work here, you would get that ninety percent reimbursement, but you don't get kicked back. And I don't believe that, again, I don't have the language right, right in front of me right now, I could pull up for you. But that's what I'm referring to. It's an exclusionary and discriminatory clause.
So as, so as a married couple, were you covered the same under the ninety percent?
She was covered in my insurance, but I was paying, she was covered in my insurance, but I was paying seventy percent, because I was not afforded this opportunity.
But you could have, you could have flipped it the other way and covered under her insurance, correct?
Still would have paid seventy percent.
She's under the seventy percent also, if she wasn't ninety.
She would not have been afforded that as well. So those are three complaints, like I said, I want to keep it to the confines of what the subpoena is. Whole army, I'm not sure why I'm submitting or having to present to the policy subcommittee, you set policy. I don't understand how a decision is made from the policy committee, it's kind of like judge and jury type of thing, but this is the form, I'm gonna respect that form and bring it forth to you. And those are three complaints that I would bring forth here. Like I said, there are other complaints, I'll bring forth in a different manner, that are outside the realms of, of the issues here.
Well, I will say, I mean, for a committee, for myself anyway, these type of opportunities give me the opportunity, give me the ability to look at our, our policies and our contracts and see where are we, where are we falling, you know, short, what are we doing well? So, I mean, I appreciate you coming out and doing this. Regardless, you know, I know you, you're frustrated with this, both of you are frustrated with this, but, you know, let us, let us look at this as a whole and, and, and make a determination.
I agree with Mr. Beegan, I appreciate the sentiment. I also feel that this is, you know, really, in a big way, a waste of, of people's time and resources at this meeting to deal with something that's pretty straightforward here, but I do appreciate the empathy you've given me at this moment.
Good morning, Mr. Bentley. Break.
No, I only, the only thing I wanted to say, and I'm not disputing, I don't have to dispute with you, Kevin. What I'm saying is, I just want to be clear. The twenty-one day dump-in of the sick time was in the contract. It wasn't paid pursuant to a policy. It was in Lozaro's contract, as well as everybody else is, and everybody of the twenty-one days. The reason why it's not in his second contract after the one year is because we knew it was an error, because that was specific to teachers. So we took it out of the second year when he got his new two-year contract, so we didn't get paid twenty-one days again.
The equipment is, according to his policy, it states, as Mrs. Bossy wrote pretty clearly, and any and all benefits not listed here with it shall be consistent with the terms and conditions of DTA collective bargaining agreement.
Kevin, if you read the DTA, and I'm not gonna get into dispute, do that provision is solely for teachers, because after their probationary period is why they get the twenty-one day dumping back in, okay? That can't.
All due respect, I don't read the policy.
Okay, I, I, I get you, but it's not.
That's fine, we can agree to disagree, and whatever that determination comes out of this, will shift kind of how we need, I'm not speaking, we, to Mr. Boss can act herself, but it speaks to how pivot and turn to make, you know, seek out, you, you know, do restitution, I guess, right?
Which you need to do. All right, just like you, and of course, you know, we don't, as a subcommittee, make a final decision on anything that has to go before the full committee and Chairman Jennings, if he chooses to bring it up, and the discussion will be made. All right, but I believe it is on the, it is on the meeting, so whether he brings it up today or was voted on explaining, I don't know. So that's gonna be up to him, Mr. Chairman. We just hear it, so we can give feedback if Mr. Jennings does. Not bad, I made a, I made a review of the full meeting, because any other committee, that full meeting, so I'll make myself available for that.
And the reason why I went to the policy subcommittee is because there was no grievance filed. So therefore, they went to a policy subcommittee, because it was an issue directly related to the policy.
When I asked Mr. Bentley as to what the next steps would be, and it's, you know, obviously, he said, they got, it was a statement, I said, what's the next step? Mr. Bentley said, because you're not a union, you're not, or the grievance procedure, which that itself is an equitable statement. So then he says, you offered the policy committee to be that avenue, so which I took, because that's definitely avenue I have at this point in time.
That's, that's, then it will be either brought up tonight or put on the agenda at a subsequent meeting or what have you, that's up to the chairman, to, they will then make a report back to the full school committee, and a recommendation, and the action will be taken.
Right, again, regardless of union status, we should be afforded grievance process, but here we are.
Have worked to negotiate that into your contract.
I think it's sort of like, it should be equitable, regardless of status. Okay, that it? Okay, that it?
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you so much. I appreciate you both.
Any motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Joe. Joe, second. Joe, second. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?